We used to be four minutes here two years ago.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, we just work for the cable.
So, it's still in the green, still a perfect color.
We used to have a setup, we used to have a lot of wires. We'd come down there and we'd often upstairs. There's no way that you're somewhere.
Hi, Terry.
I'm listening.
How are you?
It's pretty good. How's John? Is he all right with him?
It already took place. It already took place. It already took place.
Yes.
It already took place.
Yeah.
Tyler, my feet. What's across there?
Just a great time to see them and how well they perform.
Thank you.
Remember those showers?
Oh, pretty fair. How are you today? That's some... Thank you, appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, thank you so much.
Just great, great day, man. We're impressed with this John Star Show. Everybody today, first time this was done. I don't know. Just the crowd. We had kids that were teenagers who were going to Washington.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for August 28th, 2017 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Dr. Ferguson, I'm the ambulance.
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Ms. Douglas?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here. Thank you. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any announcements?
Mr. Wather? I have two announcements. The first one is Peoria High Class to Hold 60th Reunion. Peoria High School Class of 1957 is holding a 60th class reunion from 5:00 to 11:00, September 23rd at Mount Holly Country Club. The event features heavy appetizers and a cash bar. No idea what heavy appetizers are, but they're happening. And the other announcement is, I am proud to announce, Woodruff High School will have its 80th year anniversary open house Saturday, September 9th, 2017, from 1:00 to 3:30, the Woodruff Commons. The welcome will be done by Peoria's own mayor, Jim Artis, with proclamation. WHS principal and Roger Monroe, emcee. There'll be a school media presentation by Bob Slawski, a tour of the school by Terry Knapp and yours truly, Dan Walther, musical program, Denise Adams and Lee Wanger with WHS Alumni Talent, Woodruff memorabilia and yearbooks, t-shirts and mugs, observer issues on thumb drive presented by the WHS Alumni Association. Please try to make it if you can.
The prestigious 25 Women in Leadership Award is designed to recognize women of all ages, from the young to the mature, all races and religions, who have demonstrated a serving dedication to the betterment of themselves, their family, their company, and their community at large. The 16th Annual Women in Leadership Luncheon will be held at the Paradise Hotel and... Lost my way there. Casino on September 8th at 11:30 a.m. Our own Dr. Karat will be the featured speaker. Congratulations to Manuel Academy Professional School Counselor, Masique...
Ms. Mitchell.
Masique, yes. Thank you, Mitchell, for being recognized with the 25 Women in Leadership Award. Great, Dr. Karat.
Next week, we will be sharing information with our families on Parent University for this school year. The theme for Peoria Public Schools' Parent University Program this year will be Knowledge is Power. Parents and families attending the events throughout the year will select one knowledge session strand to attend for the five events in our series. Families that attend and have a stamp for the five knowledge sessions and a single strand will be invited to participate in our end-of-the-year celebration held in April on the Spirit of Peoria. The knowledge session offerings for 2017-18 will include social, emotional learning, nutrition, autism, English, language learners. Each event will offer the same four knowledge sessions. However, the information will evolve as the year progresses. The one-hour knowledge session is only one segment of each Parent University event. In addition, participants will spend a one-hour segment learning about and experiencing the host venue and a one-hour dinner slash presentation segment. The location for our first event on Thursday, September 28th, will be Wildlife Prairie Park. Other locations include Five Points in Washington, Peoria Riverfront Museum, and the Riverplex. We look forward to sharing more information next week.
Thank you.
Buenas noches. Bienvenidos a todos. Good evening. El primer día de escuela fue tremendo para nuestros estudiantes y tenemos video. The first day of school was a great day for our students, and it was captured on video and shared on our social media pages, where 15,000 to 30,000 people have viewed each of them. That's a lot of people. Please take a look as we share our first day of school at Franklin and Manuel. And if you haven't followed us on Twitter or Facebook, please do so to see more news from across our district.
You got one more?
One more announcement?
This is part of your...
Oh, this is part of your...
Is this part of mine?
Yes. Can you get the lights? Lights? Lights?
All right. Sir, is that... Did you have more than one, Dr. Ba?
That's it.
All right, Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. Just a reminder that with the Labor Day holiday this weekend, there will be no school on Monday. When students and staff return on Tuesday, September 5th, we will resume with school and no longer be on a daily back-to-school schedule. Normal release times of 2:30 for middle and high schools and 3:30 for primary schools will be in effect. We appreciate the flexibility of parents for the first two weeks of school so that staff could participate in daily professional development activities and some reprieve from high classrooms could be made available to students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Thank you. Next is our Community Contribution Award. Even though it says the Fire Department, my first community contribution award is... Yes, he's here, okay. The first award goes to Mayor Jim Artis. Mayor Artis has been a steadfast supporter of Peoria Public Schools and our students. An example of his support is the Mayor's Summer Youth Program where he employed over, well, around 22 of our students from Manuel Peoria High in Richwoods. And they worked very hard this summer. They can tell you, some of them can tell you how hard they worked. Mayor Artis has been a strong supporter of Peoria Public School and children, from Peoria Promise to Peoria Pathways to Prosperity, ever since its inception, as well as the alignment Peoria. Our board officers, superintendent, and staff meet monthly with the mayor and some city council members and the city manager to address issues that impact both organizations. Mayor Artis, we appreciate your ongoing support. I'd like to invite the mayor to the podium to make a few comments while Dr. Karat come out and show our appreciation.
Thank you, Madam President and board members, Superintendent Damian Karat. It's hard. I want to try to keep it short because I know you have a lot of business to do this evening, but I wanted to tell you that the community... And I speak for the city council and for a large part of this community. It is extremely supportive, excited, and want to do everything they can to continue in this board and this superintendent's quest to make Peoria Public Schools a shining example in our state, which we're doing. I tell people often that my three children all graduated from Peoria Public Schools. They all got very good degrees after high school and are doing well on the private side, and they couldn't have got a better education anywhere. In terms of what we're trying to do with pathways to prosperity and trying to get more students involved, more employers working with the students, you all play a very important part in that role because they know that the students that you're bringing to the program are worthy of their consideration for these internships, and I thank you for that. Peoria Promise is one that we have to continue to work on. Peoria Promise, even though we're eight years old, we're still struggling a lot, like a lot of not-for-profits are. Nobody else is doing what we're doing in that space with Peoria Promise and the opportunity that we're offering for our kids to go to ICC for two years afterwards. But our board is very optimistic that very soon we're going to hear one of those success stories from some of our students that graduated from the program that are going to be very successful in their professional careers and are going to be able to come back and say thank you to the community because without Peoria Promise, we wouldn't have had that opportunity. So again, on behalf of the community, certainly from myself, I know how hard you all work. These are many times thankless jobs, put ourselves up there for a lot of criticism, but this board and this superintendent are doing an outstanding job for our community, and we thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Lisa Maeve.
Anyone who'd appreciate you?
Actually, there are individuals from the Public Works Department. Would you like to make a few comments? And then, we also invited two of the students who wrote essays, part of your program. All your students, all of the workers actually wrote an essay about the experience, and four of them were selected, and we asked two to come today so that our board and the audience can really get a sense of that experience. We're all just really touched by the investment. You could have used that money in other needed areas, but for the last number of years, you've said, you know what, this is a priority, and we just really appreciate you for that, and the kids learned so much. And let's hear from the kids.
Hello, my name's Mary Sherman. I'm a senior at Richwoods High School, and I'm actually one of the student board members. So, thanks for giving a second excuse to be here. This was my first summer with the Mayor's Youth Program, and when I first heard about the Mayor's Office, I thought that meant I was going to be in air conditioning and getting coffee for interns and basically the exact opposite of this job. And despite my horrible misunderstanding, I wouldn't trade this experience for any other. I couldn't even begin to understand how true the statements were during the opening ceremony about growth and friendship until I became a team member. We faced challenges both personally and physically continuously within this program that frustrated me, and nearly all of them had made me grow. A lasting impact of this program is by simply using the word "grow," I immediately flashed back to our worst moment with weeds. By far, we have spent the bulk of the summer weeding and mulching, and this was totally familiar to me as a daughter of a former horticulture club president. My mother essentially trained me for this job since fourth grade to my ever-growing chagrin. My background improved my performance, even to the point where Mrs. Denson labeled me Weed Queen. And my first official declaration was that we should probably figure out what weeds are because I don't always know. Despite this, we were eventually given tools, and it made our jobs incredibly easy. And by feeling this, we were able to learn as a group what weeds are and what weeds aren't, but also had to work together in the face of adversity. And admittedly, weeding was my only strength entering the program. As nearly an albino-pale, depressingly non-athletic, and independent teenage girl, the whole basis of this program found it a challenge. Linguishing in the sun, carrying heavy objects, and joining a far-too-large group chat may as well have been in the byline of this group's job description. Normally, just thinking of any of these would put me off of the job forever, but it challenged me to become a stronger version of myself. Throughout the summer, I attempted every facet of this job that required strength, from mowing mountains of mulch to chopping down weed trees to carrying gallons of water. And despite my best efforts, I did not do these tasks very often, as I usually required a partner and was still slower than anybody else who wanted the opportunity. I also failed in my goal of earning Michelle Obama arms, but the very least, I now have a slight tan, which was previously thought impossible, my first sustainable arm muscles, and countless new friends. Even still, the most surprisingly enjoyable part of this program was the career exploration. I never expected to benefit much from it because I already have a plan and am college-bound. My goal is someday to work in public policy, whether as a politician's aide or as a civil servant in government. So, I never expected to learn about my future career during a visit to a trucking facility. However, I was quickly schooled by every single place that we visited. Careers in nursing, transportation, and public maintenance all play key roles in public policy, which means I was more than lucky to get a real in-depth look to learn about all of them from the people who truly define their industries. The program also provided me with a much deeper respect for all of these careers, and I no longer will think of them as just labor jobs or blue collar. Every single one of them required physical strength and a mental fortitude that goes beyond anything I expected. And in return, they offered a minimum of very decent livelihood. Teenagers love to complain about Peoria for not having enough interesting opportunities, which I often agreed with before this program, until I saw the countless careers and amazing fields that I barely knew existed hiding just below the surface. If anything is taken away from this essay, I hope that the enormous potential of this program can be seen. I feel like I have won just by being able to participate in this experience, and this may have been the exact opposite of what I planned to spend my summer doing, but there is no other venue for me to have earned money to put towards college while learning every single day.
Hello. Actually, when we were told to write these essays during the summer, I wrote it the night before at 1:00. And so, the next day, I'm like, okay, I got it. I did it at 2:00, and the printer had no ink in it. Yeah. And so, actually, I came here without the essay, but it's okay. Thanks to technology, I actually have it on my phone. So, I was scrambling over there trying to pull it up to make sure I have it. So, hello, my name is Terrell Rupp. Sorry about that. And I'm a worker for the 2017 Summer Mayor's Youth Program. I had a very interesting time while I was a part of the youth program. My experience was an experience to remember for the rest of my life, as I can apply the various things I've learned within the eight-week time span. How might you ask? Well, for starters, this particular experience is very, very physically challenging. We worked with mulch, a lot, a lot. Sorry. With tasks that are all day long, which teaches you how to preserve when times get tough and hard. Having a challenging task teaches you to come up with plans beforehand to try and reduce the level of difficulty of the provided task. There are many aspects to this job that are beneficial and experience when it comes to applying yourself in the real world. I put that in quotation marks because my mom tells me that all the time, "real world." One of these aspects is time management, hence, you know, I wrote the essay the night before, so... The early morning getup was hard for me personally because I was up to sleep, which forces me to plan my plans for the previous day and night in a way that will still allow me to get a decent amount of sleep and enough time to not be too tired for the job in the morning. Growing relationships is another aspect. You start out the job not knowing most of the people in the program, and as time goes on, you learn to communicate and develop friendships with your fellow mates. Here's a sign that we actually have a group chat, and we still talk to this day after the summer, and maybe one or two people in the program. This experience is specifically important because in the real world, once again in quotation marks, it goes hand-in-hand with networking, and networking is one of the most important things to do in life because that's where opportunities are created. More important, one important aspect of experience that this job provides is leading me to be financially savvy. With the program adding the SevQ Bank Sit Down and Talk, we had the opportunity to see and hear about saving money with different and effective ways to do so. The youth program took us on tours every Thursday to various job sites to learn about different businesses. This aspect of the experience is particularly great because we get a chance to do two things. Number one being that we get exposed to different pathways to take us in this life into this journey called life, and number two being we get the opportunity to be close-up and personal with these various businesses, which gives us the chance to network. We get to meet the bosses and workers of corporations that have worked for the corporations for years, which allows us to beat a lot of the competition and network with them directly. There are so many more things I can list about this job and the experiences beyond exceptional. If you know how to apply to your own life, sorry about that, you mature mentally at a rapid rate, but applying yourself is the only way to achieve that. Thank you.
Ms. Denson, would you like to make some comments? She served as a leader, and we have a friend from Public Works. I would love you to... Close it up because you really did the heavy lifting for this Italian program.
Hi, I'm Amy Denson, and I was a leader for the Mayor's Youth Program. First and foremost, thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity that I was able to work throughout the summer with these students. I mean, I can say a whole lot, but I'm very proud of the young ladies and gentlemen. They overcome adversity. They learn to work as a team. The improvement from June 5th to July 28th was absolutely amazing. They worked hard. They came to work every day. It was hot, and they overcome the heat, and they all worked as a team. And I just want to say that I am extremely proud of each and every one of them that was in this program this year. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Simon from City Prairie Public Works, and I've had the pleasure to work with this group that was here, and it had been coming in on a yearly basis for the Mayor's Youth Program. I'd like to say thank you to the mayor for continuing to keep this program moving forward. I'd like to thank Prairie Public Schools for sending the kids and bringing us to a point where we're actually able to work with the youth and the community from the Public Works Department, which I think is incredible. It gives us a great opportunity to share with them what's out there in the working world, not just in Public Works, because they've had that opportunity to visit a lot of businesses, a lot of other entities. I can tell you that this group set the bar very high. We've been doing this program for a number of years, and as Ms. Denson said, from June 5th to July 28th, I believe, when they came in, they came in scared. They had blank looks on their face. I mean, it looked like fear. On July 28th, our closing, for the closing ceremony, the excitement in the room, you could have bottled it and sold it. I'm telling you, it was incredible. Kids that didn't know each other got to know each other. As Terrell mentioned, they're still friends today. I mean, there's a lot of things that have come from this program beyond the paycheck and showing up for work and learning work skills. It was life skills. So, when I get excited, I could keep talking, and I'm telling you, with this program, I could talk for quite a while. So, I'm going to talk. I gave you the warning. When I got to speak at the closing ceremonies, I threw out some words that were phenomenal, excellent. There were a few of the other ones. Dynamic. There's a lot of things that could have been said about the type of work that these students did in conjunction with the team leaders and Coach Edwards, who was the coordinator of the program. We work together regularly every day, and I'll tell you, I'm thrilled with the outcome of the work this year, and I know that the city is, the council, the mayor, the community should be proud of what these children did and what these kids did this winter, this summer. Being that, they did work hard. They did do a lot of mulching and a lot of weeding, and as I told them at the closing, you know, they can blame me for that because I'm the one that actually sets up the work and where they're going. But it was areas that we, as a city, probably would not have gotten to that they helped us with. us with. And it was, it was, it was a phenomenal summer. As I said, they set the bar high, and that's what we're looking now for us to continue on an annual basis, as long as this program is intact, that we keep reaching that level and surpassing that level. So anyway, thank you very much for your time, and thank you for the help with the program.
Thank you.
I just want to add real quick, the flowers that are being planted out in front of the building, our kids did that.
All right, great. Thank you. The second Community Contribution Award goes to the Peoria Fire Department. The Fire Department had a bright and shiny presence on the first day of school with their apparatus to welcome our students on August 16th. In addition, we have worked closely with the Fire Department to build our, build out our emergency services program at Woodruff Career and Technical Center, where students can take the courses together for the Fire and Science and EMT to be certified prior to graduation. Can you imagine? That's a career waiting to happen. At this time, I would like to ask the Chief, Chief Charles, Charles Lucas, to come forward, please. Would you make a few comments, sir?
You betcha. First of all, we wanted to say thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to be a part of the first day of school. It was an honor, a privilege. Our firefighters are very humble to be there, and we look forward to being a part of that every year forward. You mentioned the Dual Credit Program. The Dual Credit Program is getting started off very nicely. We offer our kids that pathway with the EMT program. By the time they get done, they'll be eligible to test for the EMT Basic License, so that they not only get college credits, high school credits, but they walk away with an EMT license when they graduate, which is a pathway to a job, which is wonderful. We also offer the Fire Science Program for these kids, and again, they have the opportunity to walk away with, I think it's up to 18 credit hours at Illinois Central College. We have a cadet program that we just got started last year, and we are fortunate that our second wave of cadets, that two of our cadets are from the EMT program. So again, that these kids are, have the opportunity to come in as a cadet, have a paycheck, working 24 hours a week, and also getting their education paid for. So a great program. We appreciate so much Peoria Public Schools, being a part of that within partnership with Illinois Central College and the city of Peoria. So thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, and we have, we've actually only just begun, right?
Yes, we have.
He meets with Ms. Welch and myself, and we were planning some other things. But boy, that first day of school, it was really nice, a nice addition with your guys, but you had, with principals, so nervous. We debriefed, we debriefed after school at 4:00, and they thought it was a fire drill. And they're like, are you kidding? But then they found out it was just to welcome the kids. So just a brief token of our appreciation and the collaboration, and looking forward to continuing to work with you and providing opportunities for the kids.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any members present, any of the firefighters present now?
No, we don't.
All right, thank you, sir. Awards and recognition. Adopted School, Ms. Oakford?
Good evening. First, I want to introduce a few people. This is Cindy Morris, the president of the foundation. And with her is a new foundation board member, Andre Allen, and he's also going to serve as my, on my advisory committee. So he's awesome, and he's going to do great things, and I think he's going to take pictures. He's my photographer. Yes, and he is a, where he works, Methodist College, they have adopted Sterling School, and they, they do so much for them, it's incredible. So usually, I'd tell a little bit about the update of the Adopted School when I do this, but I wanted to start a little differently. When I was thinking about tonight, I wanted to share with you all about the Adopted School program, but I remembered a letter that I received from a teacher. I thought it was something to be shared. She wrote, "This is what I saw this year. I saw students light up when the door opened and the kids saw one of your members, and something good was about to happen. I saw kids sit quietly and determined to sound out words. I saw students with their heads cocked to one side, trying so hard to remember their multiplication tables. I saw the look of hope when one of your members came through the door, because that student thought it might be his turn for some one-on-one attention while he was learning. I saw students thrilled to ice cookies, all getting along while they did so, while they talked to you about their day or their holiday. I saw teachers smile with happiness and delight when you brought them supplies. I saw students reading, their reading and math abilities increase. I saw kids getting excited because someone remembered their birthdays when mom and dad couldn't afford to bring treats. I saw students brag about which one of the garden timbers they helped to place last year when they helped us with their garden. I saw teachers who waited with pride as you judged their chili cook-off. I saw hope, I saw caring, I saw kindness, and I saw understanding. We can't say enough, thank you enough for you, that you grew in us this year." So I thought that was really special. It kind of sums up the Adopted School program. But I wanted to, tonight, I'm going to introduce two new partners who get this program. They get that the partnerships are beneficial for the schools involved, but they also provide an opportunity for the businesses, business partners, and organizations to increase community involvement, share ideas with students and educators, and help the students of today become the leaders of tomorrow. So first, I'm going to have Mary come up from WTVP, and they are Adopting Franklin School.
Okay, thank you. I'm really excited to be here, and I'm super excited about this partnership with Franklin School. When I met with Marcia Lau, who is sitting behind me here, in May, we sat down and discussed what we could do together to strengthen our relationship. And so we had a planning meeting, and we looked at the school year, and right off the bat, this was the end of the year, so we went to, we decided the first thing we would do would be to attend the field day at the end of the year. And unfortunately, the weather was kind of crummy, so it ended up being indoors, but that's okay because our PBS character, Nature Cat, is perfectly at ease indoors. And so we brought Nature Cat along, and we went from classroom to classroom, and the kids just had a ball, we all had a ball, and really enjoyed making that connection. The teachers liked him too, so that was kind of nice. We do have a partnership going on with the Chiefs that we have for this last summer, so we have all these PBS characters that are in town, so we've been taking them on various appearances. And so we talked about things we could do, and one of the first things we did this year is go to the back-to-school night, which was, I think was that, that was last week. And we had a table set up, and we had lots of giveaways for the kids, and then we couldn't come without a PBS character, so we brought Ready, Jet, Go. And again, that was, that was a big hit with kids. And we passed out pencils and stickers and talked to the kids, talked to the parents. And then some of our future plans are going to be, hopefully, getting together and coming on a regular basis to meet with the Media Club, which is a 4th grade club, and collaborating with them, and bringing speakers in from WTVP who would be able to assist them and give them some skills in production, some basic things, maybe talk about public speaking, and invite the club for a tour of the studio as well. We also want to get involved with the Reading Buddies, which is a 3rd grade program, and we'll volunteer and pair up with one or two kids, or maybe read to a whole group. We'd also like to start, which I just mentioned to Marcia, a Design Squad Global Club, and I hope that she'll be willing to help us out with that, and which is an after-school, or it can even be during the day, during schooltime too, but I think we're thinking of pairing that up with the Media Club in some way, and it lets kids explore engineering, and it also pairs them with another country, so they could be paired with another classroom in South America or in Africa. It could be any place. So PBS Kids does offer that. The materials are very, very inexpensive, and we have offered to pay for those for this, for this year. What else? Oh, lastly, we would like to also offer professional development, and that's, we would like to do that district-wide, actually, and talk about looking at pbslearningmedia.org, and so the teachers can really use that as a resource. It's an incredible resource. And we hope to set a date for that, to do some in-school training at Franklin as well. So PBS is all about education, and we want to help in the community any way we can. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Johnson is here from Franklin as well. He's our family, yes. I want to have Mr. Johnson.
The second adoption is the Peoria Women's Club, and they will be at Lincoln School. Do you want to come up?
Lady, are you by yourself?
No. Stop laughing.
Hi, I'm Jenna Stresser. I'm Director of Fine Arts Department for Peoria Women's Club, and we wish to thank Mrs. Ross, Dr. Karat, and the members of the Board of Education for granting us the opportunity to serve the children of Lincoln Elementary Schools and Adopt a School Partner. We're excited about this partnership because Lincoln Elementary School is the school closest to our club and our neighbor. It is our preference to work with a school where the need is great and we have an opportunity to make a difference to the neighborhood children. The Peoria Women's Club has, since its founding in 1886, been actively involved with philanthropy and reform issues, including organizing the Peoria Protective Agency for Women and Children in 1893, writing successful legislation to improve the conditions of the mentally ill and indigent confined to the 19th century county poorhouses, taking a strong leadership position in the Peoria Equal Suffrage Association in the early 20th century, and in 1941, looking segregation in the eye and saying no, when we became the first private club in Peoria to sponsor an integrated event. It can be said of our early members, especially when it came to reform and philanthropy, that they would not sit down and they certainly would not be quiet. One of our charter members was the well-known reformer, Mrs. Lucy Brotherson Ting. Mrs. Ting tirelessly stood up for and successfully fought for the women, children, underprivileged, and disenfranchised in Peoria. And if not the first woman elected to this Board of Education, she certainly was one of the first, and definitely was the first woman to serve as treasurer of this board. Again, we thank Mrs. Ross, Dr. Karat, and the members of the Board of Education for loaning us the portrait of Mrs. Ting. We are honored to welcome Lucy home as we celebrate the 125th anniversary year of the construction of our building at the corner of Fayette and Madison. Thank you. And now, I would like to introduce the president of our organization, Marjorie Schwabel. Would you come up, please? Our first vice president, Carol Hornicle. And the director of our literature department, Denise Shizlowitz.
It's the book, it's possessed.
That's at least 100 likes.
Thank you, Judy, and thank you all. There's a district presentation. Did you have something else, Judy? I keep calling you Judy, but Sarah.
I knew her mother.
Very well. District presentation, Creo Fit Check presentation. Yeah, I thought you wanted me to wait the reason I was saying. Mr. Booth and Chief Booth? You all are up for the presentation. You're next.
Yes, we're here to just give you some money. So we had an idea in the summer when we had heard about some really sad events of bullying in the school district, and we teach a martial arts school, helping to, helping kids to build confidence and self-esteem and things like that. So we thought it was our duty to get involved in some sort of an event. So we approached the mall, Northwoods Mall is where we're located, and said we wanted to do a board break-a-thon. So we got all these boards, and all the kids got all excited, and the parents went out and raised money, and we wanted to, we told them all it's for Peoria Public School District. And I thought we were going to make $50. I had no idea. We actually had some people, one family in particular, Lisa and Greg Scott, raised over $340 for the purpose. Brian and Madeline Lowry, $140. Casey West, a teenage boy who I'm very proud of, he raised, gosh, over 100 himself, and they just did a, did a really, really good job. Kate Hartnett's boys, Luke and Tyler, they raised over $100, I think it was around $170. So we're really proud of our students, we're really proud that they all came through for this purpose. We planned this for two weeks, so maybe in the future, it's something that we can do more of, but we know that it's very nice to see that this school is being deliberate in their efforts and allowing us to participate in an event that creates awareness around anti-bullying. So I really want to reward the school district for paying attention to that. It started with Chris Copeland and Derek Booth. Chief Booth, right. So, thank you.
Thank you.
This was also an effort that Chief Booth and the Campus Safety Department assisted. They held the boards for the individuals that participated in this fundraiser. So we want to say thank you to Creo Fit for partnering with Peoria Public Schools to end bullying, and it's going to be a partnership that'll last a long time. Thank you.
Do you want to? What's your name? Could we get your names?
My name is Kim Gaston, my husband David Gaston.
Okay, nice to see you. And for those that can't see that, that's $1,247. $67. Looks like 47. $1,267.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, folks.
All right. Okay. Approval of minutes from August 14, 2017?
I move that we adopt the minutes from August 14, 2017.
Second.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gaston. Dr. Davidson, Abilas.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion here.
Thank you. We're now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria Public Schools. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will have a staff person meet with you for any assistance that you get, you need. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our home phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, psd150.org. We realize that five minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box for your convenience. Our board secretary will collect those comments after each board meeting, compile and share with the superintendent and the board. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each person has five minutes, and no one under age 18 may address the board without, accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher, without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is Mr. Terry Knapp.
Good evening. And I was not going to talk about this, but the fire chief was here tonight, so I'll choose to talk about my son. Twenty-three years ago, my son was a top-50 player in the country, a top-five player in the state, McDonald's Preseasonal American in Basketball. Went to the gym for baseball practice, walked in the gym door, and some of the parents said, "Your son's down." And I looked out at the free throw line, and he was laying face down. I thought, well, tore up his knee. Walked out, rolled him over, and he was taking his last breath. He had died in my arms. Coach Brooks fortunately had called the fire department. And I mention this because the fire department is here tonight, or was here tonight, and doesn't get the credit they're due. Fortunately, Coach Brooks called. I did the mouth-to-mouth along with Byron Yang doing chest compressions on my son to keep him going. The fire department got there, hit him with defibrillators after assessing the fact that he was flatlined. Didn't get him the first time. I was CPR instructor, who taught CPR to all my students in biology, and they were all certified when they graduated from Woodruff. My first inclination was, if you don't get him on the first time, you don't get him. Second time, they hit him, didn't get him. Third time, hit him in the neck with epinephrine and got him on the third shot. Coach Brooks saved my son's life. The fire department saved my son's life. My son went on, was a 35 ACT, spent, played in college basketball, and was captain of his team. Outstanding student, graduated with bachelor's degree and a master's degree on the same day. Product of Woodruff High School. Not the baccalaureate program. 35 ACT, retook the ACT to get a 36 and still got a 35. Was mad because he got a 35. That's my son. He is today a finance person, does, in his company, Legacy Consulting, was not a promotion or an advertisement, but they have 42 offices around the country. He's a top-five with Woodbury Financial as partners, number one every year with Woodbury Financial nationally. I say that because, as Sharon Cruz says, we don't recognize our students often enough in this district for their successes at Manuel, Woodruff, Central, and Ridgewood. I mean, we just don't do it. But that having been said, we give, every five years, my son and I give 206 shirts to the firemen, and on the front it says CPR saves lives, and on the back it's a caricature of my son. We will do that two years from now again for the 25th anniversary of his living. And I thank the fire department from the bottom of my heart that saved my son's life. That having been said, I mentioned earlier, about a month ago, about the Gershmanis family. And I didn't get a chance to finish because I ran out of time. Tremendous family, Dawn, her brother John, her dad, County Superintendent in Fulton County. I gave you this tonight in front of you, hopefully you have it. I want to say something about the Booth family. I want to say about David, Derek, Devin, and their brother, who I always forget, Daniel, I'm sorry, who was the new principal at Carbondale. We need to bring him home, by the way, if he'll come home. We need to grow our own here, believe me. We went out about eight years ago to North Carolina, and about 10 people in here, paid for them to come. Disaster. Didn't have anything invested in this community. They're all gone. They're all gone. This program, I want to, I sat at a table by myself, and David, I think, put this together. I know Derek, you had something to do with it. Brought back tremendous people from our community. Some of the names are on this list. One is not on there, is DeeDee Gibson, who was Wild Child Gibson's daughter, who I knew and a tremendous entertainer. Audrey was a counselor in the district. What I'm saying is, these people came back, flew in on their own, to put on classes, to help some of our students, to be role models for our students. I had a meeting today with some people in the community. Tremendous meeting. You know, people are interested. People my son's age, my son is 40 now, people like Roy Coleman, Ivan Watson, many other ballplayers. I talked about the Roosevelt game they had down Roosevelt, put together by Dr. Karat and Tommy Jenkins, to honor the coach down there about a year ago. Tremendous support. 600, 700 people showed up for that game. Tremendous. Our inner-city people want kids to be successful. They are striving in every way they can to help this community. And like I said, Derek and his family, his parents, they were the fiber of the community. And you need to be aware, we don't need to bring people in from the outside. We have the people here. We got to use those resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Mr. Sabino Sierra.
That's me, yeah.
That's you, sir.
I'd just like to mention that some of the accomplishments that we've made in taking care of our buildings and our streets around our schools. It's been a long time coming. I've been after a lot of people to put in more sidewalks, air-condition our rooms in the schools, and teach more discipline. I still realize that our students should be more disciplined, because when I visit the schools, a lot of them aren't going by the rules. And I don't know when we're going to get that taken care of. But it's coming along. But we have to really knuckle down on these things. And you see, these kids still walking in the streets and things like that. I know that our teachers have got to teach, but they got to, a little bit, they got to emphasize them things in the classroom. They got to help, too. And the parents got to get with it, you know? We think, you know, like, we're still believing, you know, it's a free country. We can do what we want, as long as you go by the rules. But it's terrible when you see people parking on the wrong side of the street and not even getting to the curb, you know? They're vigilant, you know? And this is what happens when we don't teach our youngsters as they grow up, you know? That they should learn to go by the rules. And, but, one thing, too, I want to say is, we've got calendars. You know, that was a good thing, too. There's been times when we haven't had our calendars when school starts, and this is one thing that was an improvement this year. And I'm looking forward to see our schools and our students advance. But we all got to get together and stick with it. When you see the kids doing something they should, we should remind them, you know? And like I say, I'm looking forward to that, because I'll be visiting the schools, too. And, because it interests me to see our young kids, you know, want to learn. And you have to excuse me, because I forgot my hearing aid tonight, but I know what you were talking about, and we've been having a good program this evening. And we've got a lot of good people in this District 150. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any response to audience presentation? Any questions of Mr. Willis on expenditures over $2,500? Report of request under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such request.
Thank you, President Ross. Since our last board meeting on August 14, we received two requests. And of these requests, one was filled. There are no pending requests noted. We have now received 43 requests for this calendar year for a cost of $1,891.75.
Thank you. The consent agenda.
Well, the consent agenda consists of 10 items this evening. Item number one is gifts to the school district. This meeting, $3,625. Year-to-date, $5,845. Item number two is the payment of bills. Item number three is the payment for travel. Item four is the Human Resources Report. Item five is the ADAPT Program, Adolescent Drug and Alcohol Prevention and Treatment. Item number six is Transformational Counseling LLC. Item number seven is the Transportation Department Parking Lot Expansion Bit Approval. Item number eight is the amended TRICAST Agreement. Item number nine is the Viamedicus Contract. And item number 10 is the Consociate Contract. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any of the items any board member would like to pull for a separate vote?
Yes, please, item number four.
Number four. Any others? May I have a motion and a second for all items except number four?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion here.
Item number four, Human Resources Report.
Aye, need to vote your statement.
Okay, could we get a?
I move that we adopt item number four, the Human Resources Report.
I need a second.
Second.
All right. When it comes around, would you call the roll?
Mr. Gaston. Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Abilas.
Outstand.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstaining, motion here.
Deliberation agenda, expulsions. Your report. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, President Ross. Expulsions, I move that the expulsions listed on the report dated August 28, 2017 be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Abilas.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion here.
Thank you. Before the presentation, there's suggestions by board members, Dr. Karat, do you want to introduce, which I think we've done, but we'll do it again.
Sure.
Introduce our board members, our youth board members, or should I say, young board members?
Absolutely. So we have IT Anna Douglas with us, and she's representing Manuel Academy, which would like to make, usually, Mr. Ross, you ask them if you'd like to make some comments.
Yes, would you like to make any statements?
Or announcements.
While we're having tonight, not.
Okay. Thank you. And then we also, I'm very, very impressed, because all three of them are here with us this evening, although it's not, you know, it's not really their turn, but they're just so motivated and anxious, and they're really taking this responsibility seriously. So we have Selena Ruffin. Selena, can you please stand again? And Selena represents Peoria High. She's a senior. And you've heard from Mary. I really enjoyed Mary and Terrell's essays, and we asked them to share their experiences with you. So Mary represents Ridgewood's. And we do plan on doing quite a bit this year. We've learned from our first class, so they're second class, this is our second year of experimenting with having student board members engage in this process. And so I'm actually going to mentor the three of them. So Ms. Jackson mentioned the 25 women in leadership. If they're available, I would love them to be part of my guests, and they can meet and learn about these other women's accomplishments and so forth. So we're looking forward to having a good time. We meet at about 6:00. We talk about the agenda, and I usually get emails and information from the State Superintendent, Tony Smith, Superintendent of the State of Illinois. And he normally has a lot of opportunities, scholarships, and opportunities to serve in the Senate, and those sorts of things, to travel abroad, and quite a bit of variety. So I'll share that information with them, and then they can take it back and share it with their buildings. Like, I received information from the Jump Center today around STEM Saturdays, and each received a fly-in. They have ideas of how they're also going to get that information infiltrated into their buildings. So that's pretty exciting. And if you guys have any additional ideas, also let me know. So I'm just really excited that they're on board with us again this year. Mr. Walter was part of the selection, and if you want to make a couple of comments regarding that, Mr. Walter? But great choice.
I just think, I was just thinking here, when we had the students come through, I was so impressed with the people that we selected, and they certainly haven't disappointed. We've got a group of really bright students here that I think are very involved, and I was just going to save it for my board comments, but when our board representative and the other young man spoke about their experiences with the city, I was just... And so I just want to say I really appreciate that. So they've been here for the boring meetings, they've been here for the exciting ones, but they're learning, and I'm just grateful that they're here.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I think this is just an example, a small example of what, you know, the type of students we have in our schools. And looking forward to really highlighting more of that. And I always say, we need to tell our own story and not let anyone else tell it, you know? So we are about the business of, of telling, telling our story and what we do. Right, Mr. Booth?
Exactly.
All right. Okay. Is there, are there any presentations, suggestions by board members? Ms. Jackson?
I, I, I just am real thrilled with, with our, our board members, because it shows what's, what the district is doing with our kids. Everyone talks about the bad things, but ninety-nine point nine percent of our kids are doing just what we want them to do, preparing themselves to be, I call myself a senior citizen, so I look forward to you taking care of me, along with everybody else, because you are just a shining example of what's in this district. And I, I just can't say that enough, so I'm, I'm really pleased with that. The other thing I'd like to, to bring forth is that the Building and Grounds will be meeting on thirty-first at nine o'clock. We're doing some exciting things. There are going to be hard things that we've got to tackle, but I believe we can overcome those, those hard things, and we can't do it without this community. We'll be meeting at nine o'clock in the media room. And I really encourage the community to come out and listen to what suggestions are, because we're looking for suggestions from you to take care of our stadium. And I'm from the era where we had the Turkey Day games, that we spent the holiday, Thanksgiving Day, at stadium. And I'd like to see that stadium look like it did when I used to go to the stadium. So we need your suggestions, we need all the ideas that you can come up with, and we just ask you to come out nine o'clock on the thirty-first. Right, Mr. Walker?
Absolutely.
And that is the Buildings Committee?
The Buildings Committee.
The Board of Education Buildings Committee. Right, okay. Other comments or suggestions by board members?
For my part, anyone that has been paying attention to the legislature today knows that today's been a very active day in terms of state funding. I just learned that the legislature did pass a version of Funding Formula Reform, which will ultimately benefit the district. Unfortunately, the legislature also took the unprecedented step of attaching it to a seventy-five million dollar backdoor school voucher program, which I, as an individual, am very much opposed to. So I guess my suggestion would be, and I've made this suggestion several times, but please, you know, voice your opinions with your state legislators. Let them know, you know, what your feelings are about how we fund education. After more than a four-year process of coming to a point where we are about to fund schools more equitably, it should not be held hostage by public funding for private schools.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Mr. Walker?
I'm just going to follow up on what-
Another government.
Mr. Adler said, it's, it's unfortunate that we're in this situation, but the one thing we can ask you to do, because this is a bicameral legislature, what happened today happened in the House, there is still time to talk to your senator and urge this, if in fact you feel that way. I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I agree with Mr. Adler. I'm adamantly opposed to this. I think this is a slippery slope that could take money away from public education, and I, I don't think that's a good trend for any of us, but that's my opinion as an individual. So.
Ms. Jackson?
I am really concerned about the direction that that takes us. Seventy-five million dollars, understand, going to private, that's tax dollars, going to private schools. Those of us that was around in the forties and the fifties, remember when public dollars were taken away to give to private schools, and those schools were segregated schools, those private schools? Because poor people and minorities were not able, even with the money, the little money they gave us, to go to those schools. The money that's going to those private schools, those people can't afford to pay for their children to get an education. I hope that this doesn't take us back to what I saw, and the reason my mother and father brought me from Mississippi to Peoria, to make sure we got an education. And we can't go back. I can remember walking with Mr. Winn in this very building during a sit-ins to, as we tried to integrate the public, the public schools. You couldn't get in private schools, because you didn't have the money to pay for it. We don't want to go back. I believe this is one of the, the things that we seek to come happening in this country right now. We can't stand back. We've got to speak up. We can't be quiet about these things. This is going to negatively affect not only minorities, but poor children living in rural communities. We've got to speak up. You've got to call your legislators, because they don't get it. They don't get it. We should not be giving tax dollars to private schools.
Thank you. Any other comments? Suggestions by board members? What about, Ms. Jackson already reported on the Building Committee? Any committee reports? Mr. Shaw?
Policy Committee will meet Wednesday, September thirteenth, and we will continue our work on a, we'll hope to have a draft of the safe haven policies is what our current task is.
I think it might be time, Daphne could probably pull that, it might be time to really look at a lot of the policies that are outdated, and then try to coordinate them with the ones that come from the state as well.
That's true.
Other committee meetings?
So the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee is looking to schedule its first meeting of the year in coordination with the PTO Council meeting, which I understand is Thursday, September twenty-first. We'll continue the, the charge of, of building up and strengthening our PTOs. It was one of those key, key things to improve the relationship between students and, and the district.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the board, district? Yeah?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All right. Thank you.
Maybe a record.